Good evening, everyone. I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order here at 6:00 PM in council chambers. We do not have any remote electronic attendance this evening, so we move to the board appointments. Mayor's appointment of Brett Carter to the Plan Commission to fill the unexpired term of Brendan John to expire June 30th, 2025, and Mayor's appointment of Randy Poston to the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Planning to fill the unexpired term of Brett Carter to expire July 31st, 2025. Any questions? Hearing none, we move to our oath of office for police K-9 team Officer Compton and Riggs. Do we have our friend here? Riggs?
Oh, boy.
Did you all sign a waiver of life?
Just don't do this.
I do enjoy the lethal weapon.
I will sit down.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Tonight, we welcome K-9 Riggs to the Moline Police Department family. K-9 Riggs becomes the third police K-9 in the history of the Moline Police Department. The first police K-9 at Moline was K-9 Luna, former handler here. Lieutenant Janicio served with the Moline Police Department from 2011 to 2017. And K-9 Annie is currently in service and began her career in April 2017. The principal duty of a K-9 team is, of a K-9, is to aid law enforcement as a locating tool. K-9 Riggs and K-9 Annie will complement the police department resources and are called dual-purpose canines. This means that they are trained to provide both detection and apprehension. K-9 Riggs is trained in narcotics detection, as well as article searches, human location, obedience, evidence recovery, and handler protection. So that means K-9 Riggs will locate things like drugs, people, and items. Dogs have been used by law enforcement agencies for over 100 years. The English used bloodhounds while searching for Jack the Ripper in 1888. In 1899, Belgian police started using dogs for police work, and by 1910, Germany had over 600 dogs in their police service. The U.S. military created an Army K-9 Corps in 1942, and K-9 ships saved several soldiers' lives in the invasion of Sicily in 1943. By the 1970s, dogs became a popular addition to police work in the U.S. Many of our other agencies also have police canines. East Moline Police have had a consistent K-9 program back to 1968, and also have one canine all the way back in 1925. So has East Moline and Rock Island. Both currently have one canine in service, and Rock Island County has a patrol canine and two explosive detection canines through their partnership with MetroLink. This is the first time in history that the Moline Police Department has had two full-service canines in service at the same time. An agency our size should have two canines. Additionally, as I mentioned, K-9 Annie is at the end of her service career, which is typically somewhere around six to nine years. By having two canines, we will stagger their careers and better be prepared for the cycle of new dogs. It's not easy to get a canine in service. It takes 10 weeks to train a dog, and they don't become a really efficient team for about a year. Officer Compton and K-9 Riggs graduated from the Cedar Creek Kennels Dual-Purpose Canine Course. Well, that's a handful. Which is 10 weeks in length, and unlike most other courses in the United States, the handlers are taught to train their own dogs while they're on the course and not given pre-trained dogs. The course teaches narcotics searching, advanced tracking, property searching, criminal apprehension, handler protection, and canine agility. K-9 Riggs has to pass the final exam, as well as an annual certification by the Illinois State Police. We paid for the purchase of K-9 Riggs and the new squad car. Hopefully, it comes in this week through asset forfeiture funds. Officer Compton, who is the handler assigned to K-9 Riggs, was hired in 2017 and spent time in patrol, as well as being a field training officer and on our SWAT team known as CCU. K-9 Riggs was born in February 2021, is a Belgian Malinois from the Netherlands, was imported from the Netherlands by Cedar Creek Kennels, and then, as I mentioned, just graduated from the K-9 school. We have a couple of photos here up on the screen. Officer Compton and K-9 Riggs have already been extremely active. On the right is one pound of methamphetamine. If you're familiar with methamphetamine, that's a lot of methamphetamine to get on a traffic stop. And then on the left is, what'd you say, meth oxycodone in a shotgun that was that K-9 Riggs located on a traffic stop. So we're very excited to have them here today. They're going to be a fantastic addition to the police department. Officer Compton here tonight is joined by his wife Candace and his two children, Grayson and Carter. So Mayor?
Yes, sure. Should I stay here? I'll be right here, that's fine. But you can have this if you'd like now, or we can. I'm just going to read it. And ask you to uphold this oath. So, this first portion is for Riggs. And you can't raise a paw. I don't think you'd want to do that. So, I, it, the oath reads, "I, Riggs, do swear that I will faithfully and impartially, without fear, favor, or affection discharge my duties as a police K-9 for the City of Moline, Illinois. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the Code of Ordinances for the City of Moline, Illinois, against all enemies, foreign or domestic. I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same. I further swear and affirm that I will protect and serve the citizens of Moline, assist my handler in enforcing the law to search for lost children and adults, to find illegal drugs, to track suspects, and to be a goodwill ambassador for the City of Moline Police Department. I understand the badge I wear is a symbol of public faith and trust, charging me to perform my duties impartially without favor or ill will, and without regard to race, religion, political beliefs, or aspirations." And for you, on behalf of K-9 Riggs, I, Officer Drew Compton, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will perform with my K-9 partner Riggs as a team to faithfully discharge the duties of police K-9 team for the City of Moline, Illinois, according to the best of my ability. Do you solemnly swear?
I do.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief.
What do you got over there? He loves some ginger ale.
It's our reputation.
Thank you so much, Chief.
That's great.
And that leads us into our first proclamation for, proclamation to declare January 9th, which was yesterday, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated January 9th, 2023, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and whereas each day more than 900,000 police officers across our country put a badge on and go to work, knowing they may face extremely dangerous situations, with 472 officers giving their lives in the line of duty last year, nearly three times the prior 10-year average. And whereas the men and women of the Moline Police Department make difficult decisions every day to safeguard the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Moline and provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby call upon all citizens of Moline and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe January 9th, 2023 as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have two more proclamations today. The second is a proclamation from Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley to declare January 2023 as National Mentoring Month. So I'll invite Jocelyn Coltrip and Leila Alexander to say a few words if they would like before the proclamation.
I love to talk.
Hello, everyone. Ms. Leila could not be here. She flaked on me. She wanted to be with her friends tonight, so I'm here in this to accept this. So, great, thank you. Thank you for joining us. So the proclamation in part reads, "Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality mentors to provide additional networks of support for young people. And whereas the City of Moline recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to success in their education, career, and well-being. And whereas mentoring programs like Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley make our state and community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks, now therefore I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as National Mentoring Month." Congratulations. And last but not least, Mikey Tinsman, would you like to come to the podium to speak about Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month?
Thank you very much. I, first of all, greatly appreciate, again, the City of Moline passing the proclamation that declares January as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. As the founder of Breaking Traffic, which is now connected with Family Resources on both sides of the river, thank you once again for recognizing how important this issue is. Again, I realize that trafficking or slavery occurring right here in the Quad Cities is indeed hard to believe, but it is right here in River City. So we need all our citizens to continue to learn about trafficking or slavery so that we can become part of the solution to this highness crime. Worldwide, an estimated 50 million people are currently victims of human trafficking. That is a $10 million people increase since 2019. In Iowa, also sex trafficking victims increased from 558 in 2020 to 642 in 2021. Human trafficking, in other words, prey, traffickers prey on their victims by promising a life of hope and greater opportunity while delivering only enslavement. And instead of delivering people to better lives, traffickers profit from the labor and toil of their victims, who they force through violence, drugs, and intimidation to work in the sex trade in hotels, motels, and illicit massage businesses. This proclamation was formed with the purpose of working toward abolishing all forms of human trafficking through education, advocacy, and collaboration, and we look forward to working with the council, law enforcement, and many agencies and concerned local citizens of Moline to end trafficking in our community. It is most important that our Quad Cities be free of an element that destroys basic human rights. Like you, we want our communities to be family-friendly in a place of which we are extremely proud. Having grown up in Moline, I particularly sincerely thank you for making this issue a priority through your, through this January Slavery and Human Trafficking Proclamation. Thank you very much.
And I'm happy to read the proclamation, which states, "Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom," and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas, increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas, the City of Moline joins the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking and Breaking Traffic in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sangitha Raiapati, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2023 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions on the agenda here? Oh, are you standing for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, please come to the podium, state your name.
I don't know if I'm here at the wrong time, and I should be here next week, but I am, my name is Diane Moore, 1916 Glenwood Drive in Moline, and I am here expressing concern on the ADU zoning issue that you're having your first reading for tonight. Having been a resident of Moline and driving around it all the time, I'm well aware of many, many streets that you can't even find a parking spot on the side of it because it's completely lined on one side. People are, have teenagers, people who are driving with many cars, and to put more people into neighborhoods and creating a problem is a concern of mine. The next concern I have is that people buying property, I think would be very concerned if all of a sudden somebody has a unit pop up next to them, something that they were not prepared for. That's why we have the type of zoning that we have. I think the second reading is next week, and I will likely be back again, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hearing none, any questions on the agenda? In hearing none, we go to our COW agenda item, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an easement encroaching licensing agreement with the Lewis Bay Properties LLC located at 3566 49th Street to allow installation of a retaining wall and swimming pool. Mr. Vitas.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of council, staff is recommending approval of the easement, encroachment licensing agreement with the owners of this property. After many months of discussion and intervention and understanding between the city, the power company, as well as the property owner, and we're recommending approval for the easement as presented this evening through the encroachment licensing agreement, which legal counsel prepared.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Alder Person O'Brien, second by Waldron. Yes, Mr. Waldron.
There's probably a question for Margaret. I read the agreement. It's pretty bulletproof, looked like a pretty good agreement. That said, how enforceable is it on successors? And does that have to be disclosed to any future property owner when they are a purchaser?
So the agreement, I believe, runs with the property, so it would be fully enforceable.
Okay. And does that have to be disclosed to any purchasers in the future?
It would probably appear on title.
Hopefully, technically.
Okay, yes, Mr. Waldron.
And I think that we've got ourselves covered as far as our utility line that's going underneath it, but my concern is there's a 20-foot water, I used to live across the street from this property, and you've got that huge hill back behind it, the Otis property. And my assumption, when they built that house, was we required them to have a 20-foot water drainage area along there because there's a lot of water that comes off of both, both sides of that, that comes down that, that area. And my concern is that we're giving them the right to block up that full 20 feet. I don't know, there's no drawings here, there's no plans here to show, is there, you know, are they really going to block up the whole thing up to the hill? If that's the case, there's going to be a ton of water back behind this thing, and I don't think that there's any drain underneath it. And so, has anybody looked at the drawings to see?
Mr. Lodi?
Mitigated?
Yeah, so there is a drainage swell there for surface flow, and while they're not included in the packet, the Moline Company, Meyer Landscaping, did prepare documents to show that there would be sufficient overland flow for surface flow after the improvements are made.
But that's not, I don't think, in our agreement. My concern is, we do this because we're giving them the right to build in that swell. Right now, the landscaping that is designed, you say, has enough flowage with it, but if they wind up just changing and say, hey, you know what, actually, we want to put a place for a ping pong table, and we want to move this out there, and now they block up that, that area for drainage, they have that right to do it because we've allowed them to.
I think we're protected in Chapter 34. As a natural drainway, we have the right to ensure that it is maintained as a, as a drainway.
But I, but I think that this agreement that we're providing, my concern is that the agreement is, we're saying, yes, that's our code, but we're making an agreement with you that says that you have the right to build in it.
We're allowing them to encroach on a portion of the drainage easement.
But this says for the full 20 feet. It doesn't say for just a portion of it.
If you look at the documents that are at the end, the actual encroachment, there's a legal description for the encroachment area at the very end of the document.
But it, I mean, I guess I get concerned because it says specifically in the document that it says for the 20 feet.
I don't think that that's the intent, the way I understand it.
I don't disagree with you, but I don't think that that's what we're being presented here.
I would defer to Margaret on that.
Give you a minute.
Yeah.
I agree with, I mean, I want to make sure we're covered, but I don't want it to get blocked up, and then they say, well, you gave us the right to do it.
Alderman, where are you referring to in the?
I've got to look through that stuff.
Easement license. Would it help you to have a paper?
No, I'm looking it up electronically. It's in here someplace.
There's a question while you're looking.
I think this could go to Tony.
Likewise, to the pool and the wall, if they did encroach onto that drainway, or whatever we want to call it, swell, we have the right under the agreement to get them off of it.
Yes. I could immediately, without cause, whether there was a problem or not, we could, we could require the removal of their improvements.
Thank you.
That would.
Is that for both the, our equipment and the swell?
Yes, for anything in the encroachment.
So does that then answer the question and the concern, Mr. Lodi, that if?
It's the way I read the agreement.
I'll call on everyone, Mr. Lodi.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything further from legal counsel or any other, anyone else?
Those can come back to council next week, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Should we just wait until then?
We can pass it on and then.
And please follow up with any further questions. So you're voting tonight on the general agreement. If you have further questions, there's, it will come in front of you again, and we can clarify things then. Okay, so if there's nothing further, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. All right. Concludes our business on that portion of the COW. We move to our informationals, Mr. Vitas, with the January 2023 Status and Information Report.
Well, it gives me great pleasure, Mayor, and members of council, to provide you with the end results for 2023 December, or 2022 December, presented to you this evening in the January 23 Status and Information Report. A lot of what you see here relates to both your strategic plan, as well as to other projects or items that we've dealt with during the course of the month of December. But most importantly, this wraps up the final status information report for fiscal year 2022, much of which will be reported in the action plan, which will be coming out at the, probably the first meeting in, in February. So we'll be working on those to bring you up to date so that you understand, you know, how many of the strategic goals have been completed, how many strategic goals are currently in process, and how many of the strategic goals will carry over into 2023 and even beyond, based on the nature of the projects. So if there's any questions, we're more than happy to answer questions on the report.
Yes, Mr. One.
Yeah, I just got two quick ones. One is, we had at some point in 2022 asked for the bikeways plan and the multimodal transportation to be moved up and done in 2022. And I know we were told that it was working on it, and it'd probably be early in 2023 that that would get out. But then in here, in, under that section, it doesn't talk anything about that. It only talks about the RFP for the master plan and redevelopment area, I think, under Set Moline Center and the Form Based Code, but it doesn't touch at all on what's going on with the bike and multimodal.
Okay.
Do we have a timeframe for when that's?
I don't believe Mr. Dryer's online, is he?
Yes.
No, no, I'm, I'm here. My understanding is, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my understanding is that planning was making it part of the larger transportation plan that was being undertaken. So it makes sense that when you do transportation, you also have a component for the ped and bike, and that's where that, that is. Ryan would really know more about it than, than I would at this point, but that was my understanding.
Mr. Vitas.
The RFP is on track to go out in the first quarter of this year. It's, it's been a staffing issue, and with everything else, that keeps kind of becoming more urgent priorities. It's just one of those things we have not had the time to get around to do.
So that's for the bikeways and the multimodal?
Yes.
And you think, you have a rough estimate?
Since the first quarter of this year, we'll have the RFP out, and it will take, you know, it's, it's going to be a fairly substantial plan, because it's going to be a citywide plan, so it's, it will probably take the better part of the rest of the year to actually complete, but the intent is to get that out, the RFP out here, probably in the next four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on that item?
Oh, the second question, within the CIP or capital projects for parks, there wasn't any reference to the Stevens Park, which I think was originally supposed to be built out last summer. Do we know where we are with that, with the footsall and the mini pitches, the four that are being, that were supposed to be built last summer?
Do we have Eric?
Erica? Yeah, that's, that's getting bid out in the next week or two with the roadwork at Riverside Park.
Okay, so it just wasn't included, but it's, okay, thank you.
It wasn't something that we were currently working on because we have the plans and specs done with it. I guess I was just listing the projects that we were currently working on, but that will be going out for bid soon.
Right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, 9.2 proposed amendments, Chapter 14, Food and Food Handlers of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Mr. Costopoulos.
Thank you. So as part of our staff review and update of the Code of Ordinances, where we have tackled Chapter 14, I would like to give credit to Alex Morris, our food inspector, which I know is not your actual title, but, okay.
It doesn't fit on the sign.
And she did the vast majority of the work that you see before you. This was more than usual work because it did require an update to conform with and align with the Department of Public Health Regulations and the U.S. Food and Drug Food Code. So what Alex did in an amazing short amount of time was take your old code and revamp it so that it reflected current regulations as well as the food code, and that was a monumental project. We also incorporated the new fee schedule that you previously voted on. You know, rather than go through individual changes, I hope that you have all had a chance to review it, and we're here to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. One.
Thank you very much, and thank you. Looks like there is a ton that you did in here, and I appreciate it immensely. Unfortunately, we didn't get the redline version of this until late this afternoon, and so, that's not to waste everybody's time, so that we have a proper amount of time to actually review it so we can have questions and those sorts of things. I want to table this until next week so that we can actually review it with the proper information. I want to table this until next week so that we can actually review it with the proper information.
Yep, since it's a non-action item, we can just decide to pull it right now and move it to next week, correct?
Yes, I just have a question. So next week it would come back. We could bring it back.
Yeah, because we got a work session next week?
No, we actually don't. We could bring it back next week as an agenda item, a cow agenda item, if that's okay, unless you'd like an informational.
Yeah, that's.
See consensus on bring it back to the cow. Thank you.
Sure.
We will do that. Thank you for being here and again, reiterating. Thank you for, thank you for all the work you put into it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, now we'll turn to Mr. Veelok then for 9.3, Form-Based Code.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Ryan Veelok, Community Economic Development Director. Before you this evening is an exciting evening. This is a culmination, I won't say the culmination, but a culmination of about six months of very hard work with our consultant team, CED staff, as well as an incredible advisory committee that has been the brains behind this kind of unique and new idea of zoning in Moline. So tonight, we have our consultant here with us from Codemetrics, who was the one who wrote this form-based code. For everyone who's not familiar with what a form-based code is, a form-based code basically takes what a, what you think of a typical zoning code, where it's focused on the uses of the, of a property and kind of flips it on its head. So what becomes more important is the form of the building, how the building works with the public space and interacts with the street, and then uses become secondary. So one of the great things about this code is that we go from what we currently have in our zoning code, not just for the downtown area, but throughout the city, but this is focused on the downtown area. But it's a very, I would call it kind of a very open standard. So it has language in there that development should be harmonious with its surroundings. And that becomes very difficult for staff to actually enforce. What this code hopefully will do, will have a very clear checklist of items that a developer would need to do to meet the code, which will hopefully make it more predictable for the development community, which has been one of my goals since I have started here, is creating a more predictable and efficient development process. And so tonight is really kind of the beginning of that. So this is the presentation to this body for the public draft of this code. After tonight, it will go before Plan Commission tomorrow night for them to see this, and then next week it will actually hit the streets. And we'll begin about four to six weeks of very intensive public engagement, including a public open house at the Moline Police Department Community Room on January 26. That's a drop-in, so folks can come or go as they please. There'll be both members of city staff as well as our consultant team there to answer any questions that the public might have. And then we will also be available, CED staff, to, you know, answer any questions that maybe property owners, downtown business owners, folks like that might have. We can kind of walk them through what it means for their property. So with that, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Leslie of Codemetrics and let her kind of give you all a good presentation.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. You all should have copies of the new code in front of you with the new map. The code is also online. The consultant team for this project includes myself, project lead, Leslie Oberholzer with Codemetrics, but we also have Altogether, who performed outreach and engagement, and Sam Schwartz, who did our transportation inventory. In addition to staff, we had an amazing advisory committee. You see all the members there. They met over seven times and reviewed actual language of the code. So we presented them with drafts of the code and they provided us feedback throughout the last six or so months. The project scope for this code is the downtown area, Moline Center. It expanded a little bit to the east and west to grab some neighborhood nodes that we felt like were sort of part of the downtown. Those two nodes have been treated especially within the code as a little bit smaller in scale than the rest of the downtown. But what you'll notice about this new code is that we've really applied zoning to very specific sub-areas within the downtown. Right now, this entire area, with the exception of those smaller nodes, is zoned with one zoning district, B2. And that zoning district does not have a lot of regulation associated with it. So I'll show you how we've sort of broached the scale and the sub-areas of the downtown with this new code. This project is four phases, four very broad phases. Phase one, we called discovery and directions. This is where we went out to the community. We met with a lot of members of the community. We had little listening sessions with people that were invited in, with developers around the community. We also produced a directions memo that you can find online that outlined sort of a map to creating the code. So this directions report took our survey of the, physical survey of the downtown and all of those meetings that we had with residents and stakeholders, and combined it into a sort of first step for the zoning code. Again, that's available online, and I'll show you the web address at the end of the presentation. The second phase was the initial draft code, and this is where we met, it was a very internal phase, where we met with the advisory committee multiple times. We presented this draft and we sort of pushed and pulled the draft to the version that you have in front of you today, which kicks off phase three, the community feedback. So this particular draft is meant to be, again, a draft, a public review draft. It's sort of putting our best foot forward from the advisory committee meetings for everybody to review and give us additional feedback. And we hope that you will have a chance to take a look and give us your input. As Ryan said, we will have a public open house on January 26 over at the police department from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's meant to be a kind of come and go. We will be there to have one-on-one conversations with anybody that chooses to arrive, and we will have a Spanish translator there with us. Phase four, which will begin, I think, towards the end of February, beginning of March, will be the sort of formal hearing and adoption phase. So we're very close to sort of wrapping everything up here at that point. So just a little bit on the engagement. Altogether did a wonderful job of producing our branding for the project, but they also, and on June 2nd and 3rd of last year, I don't know if any of you are available to join us, we had three pop-up events, one at the Mercado, one at the Bass Street Landing Concert, and one at Dead Poets Espresso in the morning. And then we also had an interactive parklet activity outside Lago Marcina's in the wonderful parklet that's set up there where we were able to kind of engage with people and ask them questions. In addition to these four events, we also had an online image preference survey of over 120 images that people online actually scored. We had a ton of responses. Probably most important, we also had over 142 comments that were left on the online survey, and that provided us with a lot of information. What we heard from the surveys, as well as from those listening sessions, those early on listening sessions, were that everybody was really interested in high-quality buildings for the future of Moline, that we wanted people to live downtown, that we wanted that sort of 24-hour presence of people sort of activating the downtown, that we wanted to have a more flexible category of uses, a series of categories that would reflect Moline's history of manufacturing, that we would be incorporating those broader categories in more areas of the downtown, that we would have a walkable, bikeable urban fabric, meaning that we would have, extend the sort of 300-foot by 300-foot blocks that you have in your downtown, which are very walkable to all areas of the downtown, and make those connections underneath the I-74 bridge as well to create riverfront connections. Everybody is, you know, focused on getting everybody to the riverfront. What we also heard during our pop-up events was that people also wanted to experience landscape throughout the downtown. And if you look at the map of downtown, there's very few green spaces in the downtown proper. They're all sort of to the edge. So what we want to do is try to pull in some of those plazas, make sure that you've got continuous streetscape along all the streets, and really kind of green up the area so that that connection to the river is really more pronounced. And finally, those two red boxes are really about how the code is used. We wanted to make the code a lot more interesting, and hopefully, when you take a look at it, you'll be able to read it more easily, that everybody can figure out what it is they're supposed to do without having to flip through the document too many times, and hopefully that the approval process upon development designs will then be a lot easier for everybody to sort of navigate, staff included. Of those images that we showed, the over 120 images, just a little sampling here on the, on the screen in front of you. The ones on the left are images that scored very highly, and the ones on the right are images that scored very poorly. And as I love to say, all of those images, all eight of those images are allowed by your current code. So what we really want to do is make sure that the code is helping to implement the vision for the downtown, which means that we want to proactively get to the images that you see on the left and not those that you see on the right. So Ryan already talked a little bit about what form-based code is. This diagram is one of my favorites. Your current code is pretty heavy on use and has very little information about the form of the buildings. It gives you maximum heights and setbacks, although in the downtown, the setbacks are zero. But there's very little about form. This new code, as you'll see when you flip through it, is mostly about form. It still addresses use, though. And I'll show you the two sort of key areas where you can get the information on form and use in just a minute. A form-based code is also organized by that physical form. So right now you have B21 zoning category for the downtown, which is just about use, business uses, and as you'll see, we've organized it based on the forms that we want to see in the downtown area. Also, form-based code is all about the public realm. We're really focusing our efforts on those sidewalk frontages and putting the money on those sidewalk frontages and being more flexible in the rear of the building. We also are writing objective regulations. You may look at these and think that they look like design guidelines, but they are not. These are actual regulations. We've very carefully, over the years, been able to craft metrics that help to implement design standards that, you know, achieve the vision that is defined by that image, those image preference surveys. And finally, what we hope with those objective regulations is that you will get a more predictable form in the downtown. By clearly defining what it is that we want to see in the downtown, the code will implement that, and future developments will be as you hope. So to just give you a really quick overview of the organization of the code, there are now seven proposed districts for the downtown, as opposed to just the one B2. You see the seven on the left-hand side there. The first two are purple, and those are all about having storefronts. So the SX zones require storefront on the ground floor, and I'll show you the purple and where that occurs on the map in just a minute. The next three zones are all about the sort of support uses and support buildings for those storefront areas. So residential and office, those people that you want living in the downtown, that you want shopping in the downtown and eating in the downtown and going out to lunch in the downtown are going to be occupying these general GX zones. We've created an RX zone, which is very similar to the GX, but is just about residential uses, in case you want to really focus efforts in a particular area and only allow residential there. The last two zones are the civic zones, and those two zones were created to accommodate the really special buildings that you have throughout the downtown that are civic and institutional uses. Form-based codes and all the building types that we're talking about are really about urban fabric. So they're the knitting together of all of your street wall throughout the downtown. These buildings, the civic and institutional buildings, are what we always call kind of the jewel in the downtown. These are the, the unique structures that maybe have a little bit more landscape around them, are tall or have the steeples or are places of significance like the city hall. So we've defined those separately on the map. And here's the map that we're proposing. Again, we've been pushing and pulling that map for a while, and we may continue to push and pull this map. And you may continue to push and pull this map even after it's adopted. What you see here are the purple areas are the areas of the downtown that either have existing intact and pretty active storefronts or locations, for example, along 19th Street, where we've said we want to have this riverfront connection and we want to front that street with storefronts. And so the purple is the sort of first step in locating those, and then the, the other blue areas are supporting that, those purple areas. Some of the changes that, that you will see when you sort of start to look at this is that a lot of the parking lots that you may see in the downtown have been zoned with the GX, the blue, for general residential or office. And that's because we really want to focus your storefront efforts into those areas that are already established and really reinforce them and shore them up. You may choose to expand those areas as you move forward, but in pretty much every code that I write across the country for the last 10 or 15 years, we've been focusing on reducing down storefront locations and really consolidating them more tightly into nodes and walkable areas, and then having residential and office uses on the ground floor and other locations. So again, this may push and pull as we're talking. The lighter purple and the lighter blues are those neighborhood nodes on, on either end of the downtown. So just to quickly walk you through, what do I mean by those zoning districts? A zoning district is the, the product of building types or building form regulations and use regulations. In your current code, you have use regulations. In your current code, you have, well, you don't have maximum heights in your downtown or setbacks, but typically, those would be what you have. You do have floor-area ratio. So there are some regulations about building form, but there aren't very many of those. To replace those, we're using building types. And I have found throughout my years writing form-based codes that the average person, your residents, your business owners, understand what a building type means. When you say a storefront building, they understand what that means, ground-floor storefront and then upper-story residential or office uses. And so using the, the building type terminology kind of helps the code to be organized in a simpler way. So the key that you see down there in the left-hand corner is in the code, and that key tells you, if you go to the map and you figure out that you're a GX1, it shows you which building types that you can use in your zone. So there's a specific set, and then you choose which building type you're gonna use, if you've got multiple to use. And there are six pages associated with that building type. So each one of those building types, storefront, general, row, yard, and civic building are all organized the same way so that it's easier to read and easier for staff. Those six pages get you pretty far into designing your building for your site. The first page shows you some images that were taken from the image preference survey. It gives you a little bit of a description. The second page tells you where your building should be located on the site. The third tells you where your parking should be located, if you're having any parking, and any key accessory structures, things like drive-throughs and garages. The fourth page shows you height in terms of stories, so you can see it's key to an illustration that shows stories. And then the last page, or the second to last page, facades, is what makes this the most unique. And that is that we are regulating those facades that are on the street, the primary street facades with glass and windows, I mean, I'm sorry, glass and doors, and a little bit of proportioning of those facades. The last page of each building type is what we call supplemental regulations, and that's just if we need more space to explain something, then we've got a little bit more space to do it. Everything is presented in terms of tables, and those tables are very carefully keyed to any text that you see there. So the building type is the first part of the district. The second part of the district is uses, just like your current code. I've sort of simplified the uses into a single-page table. All of the use categories are on the left-hand side, and where we could, those match pretty closely with your current use categories. But we did sort of separate out some things and combine some things that we felt like worked well together. Another part of this new code is, you'll see the little red dot up there. We have an artisan production and sales use, which is specific to artisan manufacturing, craftsman manufacturing, those kinds of activities which we allow across the board in any location. We have just found that across the country, this is a use that is very easily fitting into any kind of zoning category. And finally, in terms of those building design regulations, we have a section on building design, which looks a lot like design guidelines, but again, our objective standards, on building materials, roof types, windows, balconies, those kinds of things that I have found throughout the years that we can pretty easily quantify and define with metrics, and then fences and streetscape in site design. The building design and the site design sections in the code apply to all of the building types. So once all of those regulations are in place, on the first page actually, after the cover, you'll find this little diagram that shows you how to use the code. We try very hard to organize the regulations so that you can follow this sort of flowchart without having to kind of go back and forth between sections. So hopefully, as things get modified, this structure will make it easier for staff to figure out where to put new regulations. And finally, just in terms of the site plan procedure, we are proposing that it be zoning administrator approved, just like your current site plan. But as Ryan was mentioning, on the left-hand side in the sort of yellow box there, you'll see a lot of language that the current zoning administrator has to use and sort of navigate to figure out whether a site plan actually meets your code, which calls for harmonious and efficient organization, which I can't even tell you what that actually means. But our code is not written in that way. This code is meant to be very easy for staff to use and to approve. The one thing that I will point out is the purple that you see with the plant commission next to it is a series of relief mechanisms that allow for somebody who doesn't meet exactly what they need to meet in the code can go to the plant commission and ask for relief. Those relief mechanisms are very clearly defined and outlined in the code. If you were to search the PDF, you would find design adjustment throughout the code and you'd see what we're allowing for to be adjusted by the plant commission. So as I said, I'm presenting to you tonight, we're going to the plant commission tomorrow night, and this is just meant to be an introduction and to give you the actual documents. We will be posting this online for public review after tomorrow, by Monday, the 16th, and then we'll have the public open house on the 26th, and then hopefully to begin the formal adoption process, the end of February, beginning of March. And the website is Moline Center Future. It's been branded the forum for the future. Thank you very much. Do you want to answer any questions?
Questions? Half of us heard this at BMT, so that's partly why there may not be questions. Anyone else?
I'd like to just say something. I'd like to compliment Code of Metrics and Ryan and his team and all of the members of the task force that worked on this, and I'd be remiss not to mention Alex in the back of the room. I can remember when we first started talking about this well over a year ago. So it really feels good to sit there tonight and see the results looking a lot like the proposals that came in, and I think we had like six or seven proposals. It was a stack like this, and this is just fantastic for the city going forward. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Veedloch?
I would also like to express thanks to IDA. They are the ones who helped fund this project with a generous grant, and so thank you to them as well for believing in this project and providing some funding for it. And you will see in the code that there are some transportation components that are also in there, non-vehicular or non-motorized transportation as well, so.
Thank you for that.
And I just want to add, thanks, and thanks for taking some time to meet with me this afternoon and talk through some of these. I know, Bob, you've been here for about 18 months or so, but we probably started talking about this maybe six, seven years ago, and I am glad, we kind of talked about maybe getting this to the finish line before my term's up, so I am super excited about getting this. You know, this really will set our downtown in a position to really grow the way that we want our downtown to grow. You know, what everybody loves about downtown Moline, it'll only enhance and move forward. It'll prevent some from coming in, like some of our neighboring downtowns, where the first thing you come to is a gas station, the strip mall right off the bridge into their downtown. That's not what we want. We want a well-built downtown that'll spur investment because people who come in to spend money will be guaranteed that the properties around them will also have high-quality buildings around them, and so it'll only increase the value of the properties in our downtown. So thank you very much. Looking forward to getting this over the finish line. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Timmy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't get to stay for the end last time. There's an idea that I've discussed with a few of you, and maybe Ryan or Leslie can kind of talk about it, is once we have this codified, the ability to take SX1 or SX2 and apply it to other parts of the city, like Avenue of the Cities, this is a fairly standard ask, yes, no, question mark, easy to do. I don't know if this is spot zoning or if we just redefine the boundary, create a new boundary and apply the same standard.
Sure.
Do I need to do that?
So Form-Based Code is all about really understanding the place, and I wouldn't say that SX1 would not apply to Avenue of the Cities until we had taken a really good look at what was anticipated to occur along Avenue of the Cities. I suspect that it would be a different version, but I have written codes that, you know, the same format where you could apply a new zone for it. I wouldn't cut and paste. I think the SX2, and you'll see when you look at the map, that the SX2 is actually, not just in the east and the west, but I also sort of extended it a little bit to the south because it really matched what was there. And so I think you just have to be very careful because it is all about getting to know the physical form of the place and the desirable form of the place and making sure that it matches, but yeah.
In this case, you know, as I'm sure you've seen in certain segments of the avenue, it's a mixture of commercial with parking lots, storefront up to the sidewalk, and houses, just that are also businesses. And so it's trying to standardize this. I mean, it's the same end goal is what we're talking about, but I just wondered the ease of just kind of saying, okay, we've done the hard work, now we can kind of have a slightly modified version for different areas of the city.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Veedloch?
What I will say is that I do believe that this code will begin to introduce the development community and the community at large to design standards, actual concrete design standards instead of what we currently have in our ordinance. And I do think that, you know, once we kind of see what the development community feels like with this, I do think we can maybe then look at doing more design standards or development standards in places like Avenue of the Cities. So yeah, I don't think you're going to pick it up and carry it. Perfect example, I think SX1 has, you know, height limitations that are, you know, several stories tall. We don't have that really on the avenue, but I do think we could take some of the design principles that are in there and maybe potentially spread that out throughout the city in certain areas, so.
Mr. O'Brien?
You're talking about pushing and pulling the boundaries. Just how far are we pulling these boundaries? Because I'd like to see them go to the city line myself. What Mr. Went said about, you know, you see, we don't have gas stations when you come down there. We used to have one gas station, but now it's just kind of, there's liquor stores. So, I mean, Avenue of the Cities obviously needs it, but definitely the corridor needs it. You gotta get some money for IDA, which is kudos to you because they could use that money to help prevent the corridor too, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. All right. Thank you very much for your time this evening. If there's nothing further, that, we will call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Mr. O'Brien? Roll call, please.
Alder Person Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt? Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Hall and Council meeting minutes of December 13, 2022, and appointments made during Committee of the Hall on January 10, 2023. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3058-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 20-5109, parking time limits restrictions established. Appendix 14, 15-minute parking restrictions in non-metered zones by including city-owned MLot northwest corner space. Council Bill 3059-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 20-4201, special speed limits while passing schools. Appendix 35 thereof, altered speed limits by adding 7th Avenue from 23rd Street to 24th Street and 24th Street from 6th Avenue to 7th Avenue. Resolutions. Council Bill 1001-2023, a resolution authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to do all things necessary to enter into an agreement with New Alliance Skate Parks Incorporated for Phase 1 design of the skate park pump track under the I-74 Bridge for a total amount of $82,450. Council Bill 1002-2023, resolution approving a final change order with McClintock Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for Project Number 1367, 2022 trenchless water main project in the amount of $28,819.53. Council Bill 1003-2023, a resolution approving a final change order with M Reconstruction Incorporated, I'm sorry, M Reconstruction Group Incorporated for Project Number 1368, 2022 alley reconstruction, the amount of $4,931.1. Council Bill 1004-2023, a resolution awarding certain contracts for treatment chemicals to be used by the Utilities Department for the calendar year 2023 and authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute the necessary contract documents for purchase of said treatment chemicals in the quantities needed. Council Bill 1005-2023, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA, home repair and accessibility program, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation agreement to accept funding and execute all necessary assurances and certifications to the Illinois Housing Development Authority to accept home repair and accessibility program funding awarded for program years 2023 through 2025 in the amount of $300,000, and authorizing the Community and Economic Development Department to begin work upon the execution of an agreement between the city and the Illinois Housing Development Authority to accept home repair and accessibility program funding awarded for program years 2023 through 2025 in the amount of $300,000, and ratifying all documents, agreements, and instruments executed in connection with the home repair and accessibility program, including those acts taken prior to the date hereof.
Move to approve, consent agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Alder Person Went, seconded by O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinance. Council Bill 3001-2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 35, zoning and land development, Section 35-1203, definitions of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing subsection 104 family in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new subsection 104 family dealing with the same subject matter, amending Article 3 zoning by enacting one new Division 9 entitled accessory dwelling units, and amending Chapter 8 Buildings and Other Construction and Building Services, Section 8-7202C of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 8-7202C in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new subsection, I'm sorry, one new section 8-7202C dealing with the same subject matter. And that is all I have this evening. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Went?
Oh, just because this hasn't been on the cows come back and there was quite a few changes, I just wanted to, because I think probably next week, we're going to probably have some debate and some amendments or whatever, but there's a few things in here that I just want to mention that I've got concerns with and for consideration of the council. One, within the code as it's proposed, I think we need to add some language for garage conversions. If they wind up losing a two-stall garage, they shouldn't have to only replace it with one off-street parking. They need to then replace it with three off-street parking. There's nothing in there that requires a replacement of off-street parking that they may wind up taking up with conversions. There's another provision that's new about that a conversion, it needs to be there, have been there for 10 years before it could be converted, and I think that it would be appropriate to add a provision that unless it is for a family member, that if you're converting something to put a family member in, I know that that was one of the things that people had concern on, that they didn't have any problem if it was for family members, I think that that would be appropriate. As Ryan had said earlier, having kind of vague language about enforcement of things harmonious with the neighborhood or whatever, there's a number of places where it says that the ADU has to conform with both the primary resident and the next-door neighbors, but there's going to be a number of places, like my house, for example, I've got an old traditional farmhouse, and the guy next to me has got like a weird roof lines because an architect had lived there and everything, and so if you tried to put an ADU there, it would be impossible to be harmonious with both. I think if you put an or in there, I think that that would probably be appropriate. We don't do that for any infill. We don't require that if a house gets built between two houses that it has to match both houses on each side. So I think as long as it matches one of them, that would probably be appropriate. That, and I've talked about this a number of times, and I think it's coming up soon, that these should be licensed, not just registered, so therefore, when people violate this, their license can be revoked. And along those lines, people who violate it, the top should go up to $1,000, and then suspension if they're a multiple violators of their right to lease these. And also, we shouldn't be paying for the release of the covenant. We can provide it to them, but there's provision in there that we will then cause it to be recorded, so we're going to pay the money for the release to be done, just like most banks and stuff, we'll provide the release to them and then they can pay for the release to be recorded. So those are just a few things to think of.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Waldron?
Reference to this, are we going to have another presentation or are we just going to debate amongst ourselves?
If we're following procedure, it's second reading, debate amongst yourselves.
One thing I would be interested in from staff, would, whoever, who else has an ADU locally, or where's the closest ADUs that have been up and running in and around our area, just for, just for my benefit? And not a whole lot of research, but how our proposal would be different from what's existing there?
Ryan has used that in our community meeting, so you could send the presentation you shared to everybody during this week. That'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our non-consent agenda. We move to miscellaneous business. I just wanted to make a note that I don't want you to be surprised as you start to see some appointments to boards and commissions come through. There have been a couple in the last few meetings we've had. Some people are having to resign for health reasons or commitment reasons. Also, our attendance policy that we've updated in the last year in our Chapter 2 updates has had an impact, so we, I am paying close attention to all of every board and commission and making sure we have engaged volunteers on those to do the work that we need them to do, but I just didn't want you to be surprised because there will be some names coming through on a somewhat frequent basis. The next thing would be, I just wanted to let you know that with changeovers in
The next thing would be, I just wanted to let you know that with changeovers in our representation downstate and in DC, I did have a call with Congressman Sorenson's new staff, they happen to be Moliners, and in any case, I'm starting to have set up meetings so we can talk about some of our federal priorities. I'm happy to hear anything from you all, but in terms of those conversations, we'll be leaning on the objectives and the strategic plan to talk through with some new representation, so those are, those conversations are in the works, and that's all I have. Mr. Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias.
Thank you, Your Honor. Along the same lines with our newly elected officials, the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce is having a series of events, including one with the mayors, but there will be a kickoff with legislators on January twentieth, which all of us here, as members of the Quad Cities Chamber, can attend and hear what their priorities are. It's going to include both Illinois and Iowa side, so it's beyond just Illinois side. We can see what their interests are for the whole region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, I got, I got a few things. I had, and I'm not sure, I should probably put it down, which day was the the snow with the morning? I had a lot of calls and complaints about crews not being out in the morning or being pre-treated or or anything like that. Was that something with a staffing thing, or did we just decide not to get out there? Or what was the?
Let staff answer. I didn't receive any calls or emails about it. Mr. Dwight.
We had more snow than what we had expected, the forecast called for a tenth of an inch over a extended, little bit of an extended period of time. So we did have the night crew on, and when the, when the snow started and actually looked like, obviously it was worse than than what we originally expected, they went out and started treating the roads, but due to the the amount, it was a tenth of an inch at the start, it ended up being over a half of an inch by the time it was finished, and so the the original amount wasn't enough to where they would have automatically done something. Excuse me.
Okay, because a half an inch doesn't, it seems like that never has been issues before, but I mean, there were, I mean, my in-laws live on Sixteenth Street Hill, and there were people that were having troubles getting up, so that seems, I I had trouble actually getting up at one point.
Yeah, it it came down and kind of turned ice, a tenth of an inch, if it had done more what we'd expected to do, I, it shouldn't have been a problem, but when it kept snowing and and it, just the way it packed, unfortunately, it it became.
It was a type of snowfall that it was, actually, that I recognized.
Next.
Another was, had some, someone called me and or approached me regarding, we had, we had done a temporary fix for the CNG filling at the Public Works, because I think before that we were just kind of going down to Metro Link and and filling up there, but I guess I was informed that we're having real problems with that, and we had some staff that thought that that was a bad idea, but it was still presented to us, and can you kind of fill us in?
Sure.
I mean, was there, was there a a difference of opinion between staff that wasn't shared with us, or is this?
I'm not sure which staff we're referring to, so I'm going to allow Mike to respond to that, because he would be.
And aren't we still having problems with it and where we are?
There's a plan going forward, Mike.
Certainly, yes, so here, here's the plan. Obviously, council approved back in, I believe, June for the new CNG fueling station, compressed natural gas station, that is being built in cooperation with Metro Link and the city. It is a federally funded project. The city does not pay, I believe, the the entire amount is funded, so there is no, no matching funds or anything that we have to do for this project. I think it was August or September where we had our, we believe it may have been a lightning strike which took out our CNG station. So we, we worked with Metro Link and came up with them allowing us to fuel at their station. Now, when that originally happened, we went down there and there were, we had to go, there were some time constraints on there so that they could fill their vehicles, but there really wasn't a problem, it's it's not that far away, and and staff was able to 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 work through that pretty easily. Then they are putting in an outside pump as well, which which takes away any problems whatsoever, so that we can get to that very easily. In the meantime, we contracted and I brought to council to put up a temporary CNG station. So the CNG station will last us, we did it for five months, but we are hopefully, hoping that this, the entire amount will be reimbursed as part of this project, and and I am hopeful that it will, confident that it will, I'm not going to say it for sure, but but I've discussed this numerous times with with Metro Link, so we we believe that's going to happen, and the station was supposed to be online or at least brought to the city, excuse me, brought to the city and set up, but our thing's starting last week, and unfortunately, there were some delays in that happening. But there, we are in constant communication with Metro Link and and working to make that happen.
So that temporary thing isn't, we're still going down and and filling up at at Metro Link?
That's correct.
Okay, so the the new thing hasn't been delivered yet, or?
No, the new temporary station hasn't been delivered yet. The new station, which is supposed to be done by, I believe, by February two thousand and twenty-four, as part of that project, they needed a temporary station.
Okay.
So, you know, in the end, I believe that that this funding will help us out because it will provide us with CNG at our facility, and it will be paid for through the project for the permanent CNG station.
Thank you. Anything further?
All right, no, that was just a concern that had been brought up. Another one, which I guess maybe might be with you, is bridge point in our property management of that. How are we doing, are we doing that with 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 your staff, with the public works staff? How are we doing that? I mean, it, I mean, it's an office building that I think is full, and I mean, is this our core competency of managing, because I've heard that we've got to like go over and like fix doors and open things up and, you know, again, secondhand, so.
Mike, Mike is going to take that, I put Mike in charge of the property, so Mike and his team have been taking responsibility for, you know, everything except maybe tenant relations.
Albert.
You're doing the tenant, you're doing the tenant relations, and then you have management staff doing other things. Why don't you explain how we set it up?
Sure.
At least initially, see how it goes.
So we've been working since before the property was bought, Public Works has been, we originally came up with some estimates on what it would take to maintain it and things like that. Then we started working with the tenants, and and it is actually, it's pretty much a multi-building complex that's there. Most of the building is not currently used, there are some large spaces that aren't used. We did not plan on doing this forever, we have already been talking with property managers because we, we, this would not be our, one of our core missions, so we, but something like this had to happen in in the interim, I I think. So we are working with the tenants, we are working on keeping the building maintenance going at this time, we have pretty good relationships with the tenants, and we also kept all of the existing maintenance and maintenance and operational contracts that were in place.
Is is this something where maybe we should look at doing like an RFP for a property manager? I mean, this is going to be going on for a while, I mean, these guys are all doing this, they've got other things that that they need to get done. You know, somebody who, this is their core competency, I mean, I, in in my business, I've seen people who manage property and manage it well, that's one thing, and people who don't know what they're doing can make it worse.
Yeah, I I think the long-term plan was to look for some property management company to oversee, you know, day-to-day over there. I mean, the big issue, of course, is we want to keep the tenants in place, and we want to keep the tenants happy. You know, we've had people make requests to hold wedding receptions out there in in some of the rooms, and we've, I've said, no, we're not going to get into liability and everything associated with that right now. I mean, that's not why we acquired the property in the first place, you know, not to necessarily grow it, but to maintain it in order to make a decision what to do with it as we go forward, and that's a decision council will have to make based on staff input and recommendations down the road. But I think bringing on a property manager would relieve Public Works that responsibility, and whether we need an RFP to do that or an RF, RFQ, I mean, either way, request professional services. And there's, there's a few property managers, obviously, that might be interested in that.
Mr. Waldron.
Did the church already have a property manager, or are they doing it themselves?
The church actually was on site, and they were managing it themselves. Pastor Paul Anderson took the lead on that as their chief facility person, as well as he had one person on staff who basically managed all the tenant relations. You know, he took care of the building maintenance and and operational issues, and then he had one person who did tenant relations and basically kept them happy.
Yeah, and they also had some parishioners that came in and did stuff.
And volunteered, and, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I would agree, it's not our core competency, and it'll just deflect from other core competencies that we should be doing, and so I would get one sooner than later. You might want to look at the folks that do our parking garages, because they do a relatively good job there, and.
Thank you. Okay.
Good to know. And and I'll, I'll just do one more, I got a list, but we'll, we'll stop at this. Chapter six. I know there, we, there was some talk about coming back with changes and amendments and and updates to chapter six, you had the utility working group, we had all that stuff, and I hope we're still moving forward with that, that it just, it hasn't gotten dropped since we made the agreement with Metronet, but that we're still going to update that that section, where are we at with that?
I mean, I have been working on that, the whole focus was to try and get everything done with Metronet, and we've succeeded in doing that, so I guess Margaret, I don't know, I mean.
Right, so we have an initial draft of amendments which we're continuing to meet and refine, so I, while I don't have a date certain when it will be brought back to you, I assume it will be in probably February.
Thank you.
Okay, i- is there any way that we can kind of see where we're at in that draft so we can get some feedback as we go?
Well, I, it's pretty raw right now.
I think we'll stick with the process of taking what they give us and then giving feedback, because it's their job to build it, we can amend it. You don't, that's our lane. Thank you, Mr. Went.
I appreciate the lane, but we've also been promised for months, we were, we said when we had this utility working group that we were going to get something back, a report, and have some amendments in November or December, and now we're told that there's a rough draft that really doesn't sound like it's ready for prime time at all. Now we're three months later, hopefully it'll be in February, kind of like to see where we're at.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Is that a no? That it won't be shared with elected officials?
I just said we have to follow the process that's established, which is, they build it, we look at it and amend it as necessary. They are the staff, they will do that work for us.
I'm not asking to write it, I'm just asking to see it.
You said you wanted to make suggestions, we're going to move on now.
Amend it, like you said.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien.
Where would I, I guess I would go to the police department, maybe, to get crash reports for the stop sign below Forty-third Street Hill, you know, where you come down the hill and the, the, the traffic on Fifth Avenue is supposed to stop, they don't do a very good job of that, and I requested it, I had put on a traffic committee a couple months ago, and it got turned down unanimously turned down, I guess because I, I don't know, maybe because I wasn't there, but it was one-thirty in the afternoon, I couldn't make the meeting, but basically what I asked for was just some lighting on those stop signs, because there's one at Forty-third, and the one at Forty-eighth isn't bad, but then you continue on, and then the next one is pretty bad, too, I mean, it's a real steep hill, and I don't know how many times, there might not be that, that's probably why they reject it, because maybe there isn't that many crash reports there, but it's only because the people that live up there are aware that they need to slow down, just like for that, that stoplight that's that's by the liquor store down there, everybody from that neighborhood knows to wait after it turns green a few seconds, because everybody runs that thing, if they don't want to get, you know, T-boned, but I guess if I go back to the traffic committee, I need to bring a crash report with me, you think that would help my case, or what?
Well, the traffic committee has access, Sergeant Russell's on the traffic committee, he has access to all that data, I mean, I can provide that to you if you'd like, I can look it up here on my laptop. I'm speculating there aren't very many crashes there that might have led to their data-driven decision, but I would be totally speculating, I mean, I can, I can grab that data, but I'm almost positive that Sergeant Russell would have done that for the traffic committee, they're a pretty data-driven.
It costs a lot of money to light up those signs, I mean, from what I saw, it's, you know, amazing how much money it costs to just to put lighting on a stop sign.
I'll have to defer to that.
But I mean, it's in the thousands of dollars, it looks just, you know, just to make people aware that the stop signs are, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron.
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, with that, we, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion for executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council.
Please pause, I missed Mr. Vitas. I'm very sorry.
We're going to rearrange this so I can sit forward, you can't see me. No, I just wanted to make just a brief announcement. For the past several weeks, I mean, everybody is aware that Officer Bowden is struggling with brain cancer, recurring brain cancer, and for the past several weeks, my wife has taken the lead in working with with Chief Gault, and then been in contact with both Margaret, the mayor, as well as others about conducting a fundraiser for him. Fundraiser is planned for February the first over at Poor Brothers Taproom, it'll go from three o'clock in the afternoon until eleven-thirty PM at night. Information will be circulated both on on the face, on our Facebook page, as well as other social media platforms, Tori Brecht is working on that, and we're planning on reaching out to numerous parties here in the Quad Cities to participate, there will be food truck, ten percent of all proceeds from sales at Poor Brothers will go directly to the Bowden family, as well as any contributions that are received that evening, so we're sharing that in case you're available and would like to attend, so, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Sir.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C eleven, collective negotiating matters, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C two, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C one, and price setting for sale or lease of real property, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C six.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Williams, seconded by Alder Person Went. Roll call, please. Alder Person Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Remove to executive session.